Work director Guy Taylor leads us in invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for this evening. Thank you for this time of year where we can celebrate all good things that come from you. We thank you for this last weekend of celebration and for the sense of community that we felt. And now we ask for your presence here at this meeting tonight. Pray for wisdom in all the decisions to be made in your name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, December 6, 2021, and we'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Clean up aisle five. Here.
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 We have a quorum.
We also have a spill.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I do not believe there are any changes or corrections to the agenda as presented, so I would entertain a motion accepting the agenda.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Brent. On favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. We have a public hearing tonight for the ADA transition plan, public hearing, and we will call on our city engineer, Brian Yvoro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, head members of the council. On November 15th, the council set the ADA transition public hearing date for today, which is December 6, 2021. Since the setting of date and notice was published in the local paper in regards to today's public hearing, the published notice also provided directions for the public viewing locations, either being on the city's website or at the Fergus Falls Public Library, and also instruction for those who may desire to comment. Prior to this meeting, I have not received any comments to this public hearing. So as what I'm requesting, Your Honor, is to open up the public hearing at the conclusion. I'm going to be requesting a resolution adopting this ADA transition plan, and along with that, we're going to be appointing a senior engineering tech in sidewalk program as coordinator for this project, for this document, which is also required. So, Your Honor?
Thank you, Brian. With that, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to the ADA transition plan, please step forward to the lectern, identify yourself. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We would need a resolution adopting the city ADA transition plan.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any questions? Comments for Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Do you, did you need a separate resolution appointing?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to the awarding of bids, and tonight we have two bids to award. The first is, would need a resolution awarding the granular import quote to Berry Construction for the NP Park Improvement Project in the amount of $33,348.28, and we'll call on Brian Yvoro again.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, as mentioned, this was discussed at the last committee of the whole, solicited quotes, so as what I'm requesting is award the granular import to Berry Construction in amount of $33,348.28, and also the storm sewer improvements for NP Park. Once again, Berry Construction submitted a loss quote in amount of $14,569.62.
So we'll do that with two separate resolutions. Who would like to offer the first?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Justin?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Brian on the granular import quote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. The second would be the stormwater sewer improvement quote for NP Park in the amount of $14,569.62. Thank you, Scott. Jim? Questions on that one? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no petitions or communications this evening. There are 16, I believe, 16 items on the consent agenda. If anyone would like to discuss any of these items individually, we will remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Approving the consent agenda as presented. Thank you. Tom, thank you. Krista? Roll call, please.
Ben? Could I just make one comment?
One second. Yes, go ahead, Scott.
Not that we need to pull something off, or maybe we do, on the election locations, because the precinct two is going to be seeing some changes, just to make it clear for people in Woodland Heights where they're going to be voting. Maybe we don't know that yet. Because the lines haven't been done?
No, we haven't read.
Okay. So the locations can go forward as they are, and we'll have to figure the, we'll find out what the lines are later, right?
Right. These will be the four locations, and the boundaries may change, but these will be the four voting places regardless.
Okay. Good enough.
Thanks, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a second reading of ordinance 20, eighth series, amending the zoning map from R1 to RA for the Timber Ridge Estates, and we'll call on our planning planner, city planner, Karen. How are you doing, Karen?
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, and good evening, council. This is a second reading of a rezoning case, which was recommended at the October 25th meeting of the Planning Commission. They recommended approval, and the city council authorized the city attorney to draft that rezoning ordinance at its November 1st meeting, and that first reading would have been held at the November 15th city council meeting. So today, this is the final reading and vote, and this would be for two parcels of land that are currently owned by Otter Tail Power Company, and they were zoned R1, and it is, originally was to be included in the Hoot Lake Solar Farm, but that R1 zoning is the inappropriate zoning for that. So this would allow them, in the future, to apply for the conditional use permit for the solar farm if they chose to do so. This essentially just gives them the option to do that in the future, whereas if they left it as is, they would be blocked from doing that. So that is the history of this ordinance, and happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone have any questions for Karen before we call the roll? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That ordinance is approved. And then tonight, we have four contracts to approve, so I will call on Mike Hartwell, our HR director, to walk us through each of those four contracts.
Good evening, Mike. Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. We have completed negotiations with all bargaining units representing city employees. Terms have been agreed upon, and the following resolutions are being offered this evening for approval. All 2022 monetary increases and incremental insurance costs are factored into the budget presentation that you'll receive later this evening. Resolution number one is to approve for LALS, that's our sergeants patrol, for 2022, 2023, and 2024, three-year term in the contract, wage increases at 3.2 in 2022, 2.9 in 2023, and 2.8 in 2024.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone have any questions for Mike on the sergeants and patrol contract? Someone like to offer that approval?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony?
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Second contract is supervisors of professionals.
That's correct. And the terms for that for 2022, 2023, 2024 are as follows, wage increase of 3.2% in 2022, 2.9 in 2023, and 2.8 in 2024.
Sounds familiar? Someone like to offer that contract?
I'll offer that.
Offer a resolution to approve the contract?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Krista and Justin, Justin, Krista, there we go. Any questions on that contract? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved.
Thank you.
I'm going to guess what's coming up with the Teamsters, but I'll let you tell us.
You could guess correctly, I'm sure. For, before you tonight, resolution to approve the Teamsters contract for 2022, 23, and 24. The wage increases for this group is 3.2 in 2022, 2.9 in 2023, and 2.8 in 2024.
Thank you, Mike. Tom?
I would love to offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Jim? Thank you. Brent, you have a question? Okay, thanks, Brent. You had a third over there even.
I have a question for you, Ben. Ben, question?
Yes, Scott.
Which members are, or who are the real people that are part of the Teamsters? Because I mean, Teamsters covers lots of different things, so which ones are, who are the Teamsters?
That's a great question. It's everywhere from our liquor store employees, to several here at city hall, to the majority of our public works, park and rec members are Teamster members, and also a few over in the, in the police department as well, the record techs.
Thank you.
And library, yep.
Library, yeah.
They're, they're a large group. They represent about 62 members in the city.
Great. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Finally, we have the contract for the non-union employees.
And this is not a contract, this is a wage approval for our non-union employees. That would be a request for a 3.2% wage increase for 2022, 2.9 in 2023, and 2.8 in 2024.
Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Anthony, thank you. Questions on the non-union wage increase? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That contract, that resolution is approved.
Thank you very much.
I would, I would like to say to Mr. Hartwell, thank you very much for the fine job that you do on this. I remember years that we were into March and April and not have contracts yet, so since you've been here, you've handled that quite well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Very much appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Onto the presentation of claims. Tonight, we have claims in the amount of $2,850,478.74. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our finance director. Jim?
I'll make that resolution to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll make one comment, if you like.
Please.
Among the bills being paid tonight are just a few thousand dollars. I think it's, it's actually less than $4,000 for going toward a facade loan downtown, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to point out the facade loan program for those who might be looking to upgrade their downtown or other places in town, that we've got that program, and Clara will be more than happy to talk to you about it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. There are no board committee and department reports, there's no old or unfinished business, there is no new business that I'm aware of, and we cannot start our budget presentation until after 6 o'clock, so I guess with that, we'll take a short recess, and we'll reconvene at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Are we good to go, Lynn, do you think, from TimeWise? Okay. Sounds good. So we're here for the budget meeting. I've been working on this since last June. We last talked to you in September. You'll see on our timeline here, we start in May, June, and roll through. We present a preliminary budget to you in September, and then we certify a proposed levy to Otter Tail County in September. We cannot go up from that levy to tonight, but we could always go down. That was always the, you know, the only way you could change that. We are not changing that levy. It's still the same as what was presented in September and what went on on the tax statement. So that's what we have in the budget here tonight. We'll go through this presentation, and then we'll allow the public an opportunity to speak if they have comments for you. So budget assumptions in here, you can see wages, we have those three years in there that you just approved, that Mike went through with you. We have health insurance in there as well at 3.25. If you'll recall, we did switch to Medica for 2022 and had some significant savings through our Lakes Country Service Co-op. They went out for proposals on that, which you need to do that periodically by law, came up with some great rates for the cities. And then our utilities and insurance, we work with our utility companies and then the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust to come up with estimates for that. We're just in the process of renewing our insurance coverages right now, so we don't have the actuals yet, but we're in the process of working with the league on that. So total budget here, the 2022 proposed revenues of $45,036,456, proposed expenditures of $43,480,407. Those numbers are higher now than what we talked about in September. Keep in mind, this is the budget portion of it. So a couple of the changes that we put in there was the NP Park estimates came in higher than we thought. We were originally thinking $500,000, it's at 675. So we increased in the capital improvement plan and in the budget to 675, and then on the revenue side, increased the donations revenue, because then they'll need to raise more funds of that extra 175. So you can see, we bumped up the revenues with those donations, bumped up the expenses on that. We did add in a street project, we'll see that later in here as well, for, check my notes so I don't, Summit, Linden and Oak Street reconstruction of $250,000. It's an estimated project in there, put it in on the expense side, and then in a bond issue on the revenue side. Again, that project would come back before you as the city council for you to review that. We also went through and reallocated equipment rent between funds, so it was a net savings of about $5,000 when we looked at that, and we tweaked health insurance too, so actually health insurance went down a little bit. With those two things, we saved about $5,000, put that back into tree trimming. If you remember, we had decreased tree trimming, and so we dropped at $15,000, we just brought that back up five, so we're still at a net decrease of $5,000 on that. So a little detail there at the beginning, but I wanted to explain why some of those budget numbers had changed from September. Now, the next block there, the tax levy at $7,58,500, that is the amount that we proposed in September. That is a 6.87% increase from 2021, and a couple of things I want to point out is remember you as a city council did no change to the property taxes from 2020 to 2021, so you held that stable, and of course, costs continue to rise throughout the city as well. And also, when we look at cities across the state, the League of Cities looks at reporting of what was submitted to the state of Minnesota from the September presentations that all the cities made, so the average for all Minnesota cities is 6.6%. So we're kind of right in the ballpark there too of cities across the state. But keeping in mind, we here in Fergus Falls did not change the taxes last year, they were at a zero change last year. Tax capacity rate then goes from 55.998 to 58.945, or about a 5.26%. That percentage is a little bit less of a change because of increased values in the city, new construction in the city that goes in, it's more of the pie to divide this levy over. So this just breaks down that total proposed budget into the various fund types. You have your general fund, that's our main operating fund of the city, so street department, public works, park and rec, police department, fire department, community development, engineering, all our administration, so the main operations of the city fall under that million of 13.3 million. Special revenue funds are major ones in there, the Port Authority and the public library, all our tax increment districts, tax abatements, they fall under there. That's where those funds that have a dedicated revenue source that's going to continue on for future years gets labeled a special revenue. Debt service, that's where we pay our bonds. So the city issues debt, we make those debt payments, those are the principal and interest payments on, on those fixed bonds that we have. Capital projects funds, that's where you build projects. So you build the library, a police station, downtown riverfront, that's where those projects all flow through. All our street projects that we do flow through there as well. We collect special assessments and tax levies within those funds to help make those debt service payments as well. Enterprise funds, so those funds are run like a private business. That's our sewer, water, stormwater, refuse, and then the liquor stores all fall under those areas. Internal service is our fleet of vehicles, the customers are the departments of the city, so they're rented between city departments. So this just shows a pie chart of our revenue. You can see the biggest part of the city revenue comes from charges and sales, so that's your liquor store sales, as well as those enterprise fund sales we just talked about, and various charges within the governmental funds. Intergovernmental, that's where local government aid. The city of Fergus Falls is dependent on local government aid, it makes up a big part of our budget, that falls in that intergovernmental, as well as funding for some various street projects. We get state aids for things like that. Property taxes then make up 16% of the overall budget for the city as a whole, so you can see it's one piece of the pie, but all these different areas come together to fund the city as a whole. Expenditures then, you can see wages, benefits, and health insurance make up, you know, about 30% of the city budget, so we're a, we're a people-based organization that serves the public. So that's where employees fall in, you can see the liquor store operations there, and capital outlay is another big one too, is where we do our capital projects. Here's the proposed levy, just a recap of what we saw in that first page block, going, you know, up to 453,716, or 6.87%. And again, we already pointed out that that was a zero change in the prior year. So how does the tax system work, just on a very high level? Otter Tail County, they have the assessing process, where they go out and assess the values of the, of the properties, and then in the state of Minnesota, you have class rates that get applied to those market values that are determined by the county. Then that, you take those two, and that becomes your tax capacity number. And then the city, you here tonight, you establish the tax levy as a flat dollar amount, and then you ask Otter Tail County, go spread that over all properties in, in the city of Fergus Falls and send those funds here. So you take that tax levy, and then you divide that by the tax capacity, come up with that rate, and that's that tax rate we talked about back on that first slide, and it takes that rate times that individual tax capacity on that home, and that's how you calculate a individual tax bill. Now, when we talk about, we are going to talk about individual properties here tonight, the purpose of this meeting is, on the whole, like this is where we, where we look at it. So here's just a chart showing the tax levies and rates. You can see the levy being held flat there from '20 to '21, and then our increase here from, to 2022, and then, of course, the one that makes the big dip in 2021, when you hold that levy and doesn't make any changes, but then you have great growth in values, as we all have seen housing values skyrocketing, as well as new construction happening, that drives that rate down, and that's why we saw the, the big decrease in that rate last year. This just shows a chart of the various tax rates with the other taxing jurisdictions as well. I'll point out the Woodland Heights annexation. Next year, when we come with the 2023, they'll be completely phased into the city, so then that'll just join back in with the entire chart here. Just shows impacts then of what the taxes would have been under the old and under the new. For a couple examples, there are about $125,000 home and a $500,000 business. So taxes and state aid, again, are a major funding source for cities, that's how we're funded. So last year, again, no levy increase, and remember last year, we assumed we would lose a lot of local government aid. We were dealing with COVID, and we didn't know how that was going to impact cities, so we budgeted for that. Thankfully, that did not materialize. So in the 2022 budget, we've talked about our, you know, our levy and the state aids, and of course, that we experience cost increases just like everyone else in our equipment and machinery, everything we purchased to, to run the city as well. The property tax levy increases in there, and then the local government aid, we brought that back up to the certified levels, which then is an increase of $8,400 from certified level to certified level on that. This is just a chart showing local government aid dating back to 2020, or 2002, showing how it moved around a bit, but it's been pretty stable now for a number of years. So our general fund, just a recap, we thought we were going to lose that LGA. We had $600,000 in for a grant this year for the dairy. We were going to use $300,000 from our fund balance, we're going to use our savings account to bridge that gap of that local government aid loss. We don't need to do that because the, the loss didn't materialize. We were going to transfer more from the liquor store because of that LGA loss, that we didn't have to do, and we've already adjusted the budget for that as well. And then we used some bond proceeds to purchase a fire truck, so that was all done in 2021. The reason I talk about last year, as well as what we're seeing in 2022, is because we, we want to explain what some of the changes are and what, what changed in the budget. So 2022, we restored, you know, the LGA levels, we reduced those liquor store transfers, we're at the normal level now of 607,000 that the liquor store is moving over to the general fund. And then we're using a little bit of general fund, because now we're reopening the Big Wood Center, we're anticipating that to be in January or February. We know we're expecting that to have some losses the first three years before it's profitable in year four, so we're going to make up for that loss of getting that started, again, of 107, looking at a comprehensive plan for 75,000, and then a new calendar email system for 30,000. And I know our IT department is in the process of looking at three different proposals for you, so hopefully we'll have something soon to come back with. General government area, we have an election in 2022, a general election, we're going to look at some of those technology updates, our planning department comprehensive plan, and then, since we had city hall on the picture, we want to remind you, we are budgeting to take care of our buildings as well too. We are consistently keeping money in the general government buildings area to take care of those tax-supported buildings. Public safety, our police department, budget is $4,154,345, basically just restoring them back to the 2019 levels after making cuts for COVID in 2020. Fire department, kind of the same thing, 825, kind of bringing them back to their normal level of funding, and of course, it shows a decrease because we have that purchase of a fire truck in there, and we're not going to purchase another one for several years, so the budget actually going down because of that fire truck purchase in 2021. Streets and highways, the tax levy committee is committed to funding streets. We've done, you know, a couple years of 20% increases to street funding, we're looking at a 10% increase again to that of 37,440. That would bring seal coat, mill, and overlay projects to four, just about $412,000 within the operating budget. Street lighting, Otter Tail Power is taking over the street lighting for the city, installing new streetlights. We've seen that throughout the city as phases one and two are complete and operational. We're seeing some addition now in the downtown riverfront project, like behind the Viking, those new lights going up there. We will be looking towards phase three for street lighting, we'll need to come back to you with that, and then also, we'll be talking about some franchise fees and relating to and relating to that and street infrastructure as well, which is what this slide is. A franchise fee being a pass-through fee that would go on to the electric and natural gas bills to fund street infrastructure. We know that's a big priority for the city to keep funding streets and putting more money into that wherever possible. And then funding the phase three section of the street lighting. So we kind of hope to have that all ready and bring back tonight. But we are still working on that, still gathering some numbers. So we will come back to you hopefully soon with some franchise fee data so we can make some decisions about which direction to go on that. So that's not included in the budget right now. Phase three of the lighting and then the franchise fees are not currently in the budget. So we'll come back to you and then see how we could look at implementing that. But we want to, you know, a good plan to come together and then a good education project for the process for the public as well. Parks and Recreation, that budget is down just about $1 million. And that is that purchase of the LCCMR property on the dairy for the trail buffer along the river. And that is, will be funded through an LCCMR grant and 400,000 from the general fund balance. That's, hopefully, will close yet by December 31st. We had to extend that purchase agreement. Hopefully, we won't have to again. I know Claire is working hard on getting that done with the DNR. The downtown Riverfront project, of course, is well underway. And our, we do have a levy in next year for 113,000 as a new one. And that's for the bonding we just did for constructing the phase one improvements. Economic development, we are maintaining our funding to Greater Fergus Falls of $50,000. We have new tax abatement levy for the housing rebate program of 26,005. And through June, we had 34 homes in that project. I know there's been some more since then. And we'll bring you another update of that soon to kind of see where the year wrapped out for that. And lodging tax collections then are restored back to that 2019 level at 140,000. So that's good news that we are seeing that all trend up, too, as well as people are back staying in Fergus Falls. Port Authority, we're keeping the levy at 60,000. And remind you, we own the Community Behavioral Health Hospital, receive rent from the state of Minnesota for that to operate and maintain that facility. So that's completely funded by the state. Same thing for the Lakes Country Service Co-op Level Four Education Facility. They pay a lease to the Port Authority. Then the Port Authority pays the bonds for that. So it's completely funded by Lakes Country Service Co-op. Both good examples of projects of the port facilitating something, you know, rebuilding and providing places for these places to work and to learn. And then Port Authority is still in some purchase agreements on industrial park lots. Hope to get more of that sold. We have sold some lots just on this fall as well. So that's been doing well, too. Good to see business happening out there. The Port Authority also agreed to make the first payments on the demo loan and the cleanup revolving loan that are for the dairy property, the cleanup and the remediation over there. So thankful for that and hopefully get some development happening there as well, too. Public library, operating budget, $954,000. We'd just like to show you that's mainly tax levy supported, some regional library aid as well. And then Gail is getting a big REEDS grant for 2022, so good news there. The Bigwood Event Center, we did talk about that, so I won't reiterate this slide, but we're looking to reopen in January or February with LHR hospitality helping us to get that up and running. So we've had a lot of people calling in to wanting to book events. The technology, looking to get installed probably in January, pushing towards February as well. There's, of course, some delays on shipments, but all that is underway as well. The capital improvements, what's in there for next year? We're looking at Hampton from Cascade to Sheridan, Union Avenue from Lincoln all the way over to Fehr. There was an agenda item on the agenda here tonight for that. Stanton Avenue, of course, Union to Broadway. And then Summit, Linden and Oak is what I added then in since September that we talked about. Our sidewalk program there, the RTC preservation project. And then the second block of the downtown Riverfront project here. And you can see NP Park and then stormwater improvements out at the golf course possibly. Again, all those projects will come back before the council in the normal process. Liquor store fund, you know, good operations there. We had a very big year in 2020 with bars and restaurants being closed during that time. So we're kind of back to the normal levels on the liquor store, but still seeing continue. Each year, we tend to grow a bit there. Refuge fund, we went through all our utility rates in detail. So I want to just pause on this one just a little bit as we kind of wrap this up. So we're looking at increases in refuse. Garbage is expensive and recycling is expensive. That's the one thing we definitely know. Handling waste is very expensive. So our budget includes a 3% increase for the collection service, 2.5% increase for the disposal of the garbage. And that's, we dispose that of Otter Tail County, so our costs are going up 2.5%. So we need to put that on the revenue side to just compensate for that. Recycling going up 8.3. We're going from $6 to $6.50 is what we're proposing. And then changes out at the landfill. The demo rate is what we're going to come back to after I finish summarizing this slide. I want to talk about that a bit. We were proposing going to $31 on that. MSW from 20 to 21.50. And then combining soft goods, that's your mattresses, chairs, sofas, and whatnot, the landfill. Combine that with other bypass that goes out to Gwinner and moving that from 21 to $25. Remember how we talked about we get individual charges for mattresses out in Gwinner? Where if we don't do this, we're going to lose money by accepting mattresses. So that's why they're bringing those fees together. Now, back to the demo cell. Our study shows we need to charge $31 per cubic yard to break even on demolition. So if you're doing a construction project or remodel, that's the cost. And we have pulled apart those costs to make sure. Are we allocating everything appropriately? I feel very confident in that. Remember I said in September or in November when we talked through this, I don't like that rate. I still don't like $31 because we will, we're already, you know, high on that, on that rate compared to Otter Tail County. We are, we're a lined cell and we have to collect all the leachate and treat that. And we went through that a few years ago, and that's where all the cost came from. It's a very expensive facility. Other landfills around the area have not had to do that yet. So we paved the way for that. Now, city staff has started talking with Otter Tail County a little bit about what does the future of this look like? Because we are so different in our rates. Our 31 would be compared to like their 16. That's a big difference. So I am proposing that we don't go all the way to 31. We probably go to 28. We will lose a little money on that. We'll, in essence, subsidize the demolition area from other areas of the refuse fund. But then maybe over the next three months, city staff will work with Otter Tail County on what is the future of demo waste look like? And maybe after that, we come back to the council, maybe get a couple council members that want to join us on that and kind of walk through this process. So what do you think of that? I'm just thinking out loud and, you know, I just feel 31, it's what it would cost to break even, but I'm just having heartburn over that.
You know, I mean, it costs what it costs.
You're right.
Eventually, the other facilities are going to need to build new cells and be held to the higher standards. So, you know, not, not all of our citizens use our demo facility necessarily.
I would echo this. I'm comfortable with 31. I'm not hauling my garbage to Otter Tail County to get it at 16. That's the cost, that's the cost. I mean, I don't, they're going through a process. We'll be having to upgrade their system in the future. So, I mean, we have justification by what you're saying. And I think it merits to leave it at what it is. And if somebody wants to haul their garbage to Otter Tail County, then we have more life on our system. Maybe my thought.
Yeah.
They also have the expense of hauling it there, too. So you've got to build that into what the costs actually are.
Right. But I mean, if I want to go bring it there for 16 and not do it for 31, then that's my choice. But I'm comfortable leaving it at 31.
Brett?
The question I have is, since we've increased our rates, have we seen a reduction in the amount of people coming in and dropping it off?
So 2020 being an anomaly, we actually saw a large increase because people were home. This is what we're thinking and crediting into. People are home, cleaning out, getting rid of stuff. So we saw almost $100,000 increase in revenue. Now, for 2021, we're back to the 2020 or 2019 level very close. How, just a couple thousand, right? So, and we're at the same rate. So, you know, the rate we are charging now in '21 was the same as in 2019, and we're coming in within a couple thousand dollars. So we had that anomaly and, so we're not seeing a big decrease and...
Yeah, I mean, if we're not seeing a decrease, I mean, people are thinking of it more of a convenience. I mean, they may have to pay more, but if they're going to end up paying less, you know, the time, the gas, and everything else to go, it might not be worth it for them. So, I mean, I would say let's keep it at the 31 and at least cover our costs.
Yeah, if I could just add, too, that I wouldn't have heartburn. I have not received one call
Okay.
from a constituent regarding our landfill rates. I don't know if anybody else can speak to that, but nobody's called me complaining of our landfill rates. I think I have confidence that you're fine.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Very often, when we're talking about the refuse department, you describe it as running it like a business, an enterprise fund. And I think if we're going to run it as a business, we can't do less than break even. And we don't do less than break even elsewhere. So I would support sticking with 31. I think that those who would be most affected by it would be the big haulers that are doing major demolition projects. And the run-of-the-mill person that's just hauling stuff from their garage, this is a minor cost.
Right. You all are saying exactly what we have wrestled with. So, I mean, we're all on the same page and speaking the same language. So you've given me renewed confidence in, yes, the numbers speak for themselves, so they do. All right, that's refuse fund. Sewer fund, we're not making any changes there, so leaving those rates the same. Water, 3%, just to kind of keep up with inflation. Stormwater, no changes there. Equipment fund, we did about a 3%. And then I reallocated everything within because we were so close with, if we marked them all to what it actually should be, where all the equipment is being used, it was a good year to just get everyone back on track. We do that maybe every four to five years. And then, like, we'll just do inflationary adjustments in the departments after that and then kind of do these studies and resets. All right, so that's the last slide, next steps. We are here tonight looking for, you know, your action on the budget if you choose. We need to have this certified, Otter Tail County, by December 28th. And we will come back to you with the franchise fees then as well. We'll be talking even tomorrow about that a little bit more in-house. So that's all I'll say now, then we open it to the public.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, Sandy, as well, for all your work on the budget. Thanks to the tax levy committee, Andrew and Caroline, as well. So with that, the public now has, we're going to give the public an opportunity to comment. It's not a public hearing, but we will allow anyone who wants to speak to the 2022 budget and levy the opportunity to do that at this time.
Sounds good. And I will kick that off. We had one call today from one resident on Stanton Avenue. Ms. Phillips just called to express her objection towards the budget and what we presented. So she was not supportive of it. Just wanted you to pass on those comments that she had left us a message, so.
Sir, if you'd like to, ma'am, sir, if you'd like to speak, please feel free to come up and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Welch. I live at 821 South Whitford. And the man that was just up there said that the tax increases from 2020, there was none from 2020 to 2021. The value of my house went up from $88,600 to $103,300. And then next year, it's going up, this year, it's going up again to $142,600. And I don't feel this is, I can't afford it.
Sure, just to clarify, sir, it's the levy that did not increase in 2021. So the assessor, the county assessor is the one that actually puts the value on your home. It's not the city. So the assessor determines the value of your home. The city determines the levy. And then the taxes are put against each property based upon that levy. Is that, did I say that correctly accurately?
You did. And, no, you bring up a very good point because, and it gets really confusing, too. Because, yeah, when we keep a levy at zero or if like this year it's at 6.87%, you know, rarely does it translate exactly to that to your tax bill because your home value changes and different things with tax credits. So, yeah, when your home value goes up, you know, even if, I remember we were saying that last year, even with a 0% levy change, if your home value goes up, you still could see an increase, even though the city, we didn't increase the tax levy. But the way it gets allocated over the pie of the whole city then can change, so.
And there's a process, sir, that's available, I believe it's in May still. It's
End of April.
End of April, beginning of May, where after the values for the upcoming year have been determined by the county, then you can, there's a meeting at the county. We have a meeting at the city where you can question that. And city representatives, along with counties, will go out and look at the property and you can have that ability to question the increase in value to your home. So if that makes sense, does that make sense that what?
Not really.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that's what this meeting was about.
Well, this meeting is about the actual, the levy that the city is proposing. How that actually affects each property is slightly different based on, again, the county assessor and what the value. So I don't know your particular property, but it sounds like it went up significantly.
Yes.
From 88 to?
133, no more now.
Yeah. And that has, you know, unfortunately, that has
142.
Yeah.
We haven't did any improvements at all.
Sure, I completely understand your concern. Unfortunately, that has nothing to do with this body right now. This county assessor is the one that determines that value. And we just simply get the aggregate of all that information in.
Equalization here.
Is this the December 14th meeting, then, at 6:00 PM?
That'll be the county's meeting just like this, so it's
The board, yeah.
When the Board of Equalization meets, that's in May, you say?
April.
April, right. So what happens is you get your preliminary tax statement in April or in late March or early April, that that gives you the proposed assessment for each of the values for the upcoming year. And that happens in late April or May. That's when you can contest that increase or whatever value that's stated. Then the December meetings, here's the sixth, there it's the 14th, next Tuesday. Yeah, I guess a week from tomorrow is the 14th, their meeting. That's when you have an opportunity to speak to their proposed levy and budget. I know that's probably very confusing, I apologize.
Okay.
But we can follow up, sir. We can follow up, make sure that we get you the information on the process for the Board of Equalization and how you can contest that, what the timeframe is. And we can make a list throughout the, or a timeline of the yearly events that people have in order to, for the different questions relating to their property taxes.
Okay.
The county will mail a statement to you with some updated information after all the levies have been figured out across the county. And then we'll have a date when you can come in and talk to your council members about your personal property at that time.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll make sure, sir, that you get that, if someone from city staff follows up to get you the information that we're talking.
Sir, sir, the way that works is you have the county assessor's people at that meeting, and you have one person from each of the four wards that are there also. And if you don't agree with what they've done, we will go out afterwards and look at your property and reassess it at that point.
And if you have questions about how the county assessor evaluates the property and comes up with these proposed numbers, you should talk to the county assessor directly about that so that you understand the process that they employ in arriving at these numbers. And Jim is correct, is that you do have the right to challenge those numbers, and there is a process to do that. But to understand how they arrive at those numbers, I would go talk to the assessor.
But that's not at this meeting, it's at a different
Yeah, but that's a different government entity. It's the county.
The number should be right on the top of the sheet in your hand there. And I would encourage you to call them
Sooner rather than later, yeah.
And they can explain that now, and then you'll be prepared for that process.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to the budget? Thank you. Seeing done, we'll bring it back to the council and we'll look for the resolution adopting the 2022 levy.
You know what I'm going to do?
Let's get a resolution before then we can have the discussion, if that's okay.
Hold on for that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista, go ahead.
Normally, Bill, we get like the sheet that has kind of like Normally, but we get like the sheet that has kind of like the line items on it with the pluses and minuses?
Yes, that's all in your packet. I didn't bring paper copies of that.
Right, okay. So there was a...
Is this what you're thinking of?
Yep, yeah.
Yep, so this is, came out as a separate packet with this.
Okay, maybe I saw, I saw the blue one.
Can I look at it?
It's shown.
It's on the website, too, right?
I'm a paper person.
You know what you're looking for, and I can help you.
Yeah, I was, I know where I was going, yeah.
Do you want to men to look at that before we vote?
The 82 pages. It was just to see where we were going up and down on kind of some of the stuffs.
Kind of by the departments?
Yeah.
Or did you?
Yeah.
Could I ask a couple questions while Anthony's reading over there?
Yeah, please do.
If we wanted to make any kind of adjustment to what's been presented, the process would be what at this point? Would we make an amendment to what's been presented or what?
Should I throw out what I would recommend or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, please. I have some thoughts as well.
Yeah, if you wanted to do that, I mean, one, by December 28th, we have to have it to the county. That is the deadline. So if we needed to, we could come back to the next meeting. I would recommend you send that back to the Tax Levy Committee because they're the, you know, committee that's charged with bringing you a budget that's acceptable. You know, that's what we said in September, too. If you have things, bring them up. I know Brent, you contacted us and talked through some things with the senior center. So making sure we were covered there. So, you know, that went back to the Tax Levy Committee. So that's what I would recommend.
So I would...
But it can only go down, it can't go up.
The levy can only go down, right. We can move the budget around, but yes, we cannot increase the levy.
No, I would just say, as Bill said, you know, this was presented in mid-September, September 20th. And, you know, the Tax Levy Committee has worked pretty hard on this. We've given opportunities for anyone that wants to bring anything to us, as Brent did, and we worked through that. So if there's something that a majority of the council feels very strongly that we need to change, then I think we could send it back to the Tax Levy Committee. But the Tax Levy Committee's done their work and had, people have had opportunities. So I would, I would like to pass this budget. But if there's things that people want, that are, the majority of the council thinks that we need to reconsider, we can do that.
The specific area that I guess I wanted to point out was, last year we did not do an increase in the street budget, and we made a lot of statements about how we were trying to be sensitive to the COVID stuff. But the years before that, we'd been going 20% up at a time, and I guess my expectation was that this time we would be going up 20%. So when it came in at 10%, that's the sticking point for me. If there was any way to get that closer to 20, that's what I was wanting to see. And when you take a look at the list of projects, whether they're in the capital improvement list or elsewhere in the budget, there are areas where I think we could, where we ought to address or ought to see listed that aren't. For example, the alleys behind Victor Lundin's. You know, that parking lot is now going to look really terrible compared to the new ones over here. And other streets in town, you know, everybody's got their favorite street of what, you know, their favorite pothole. Just down the road from the mayor's house on Vernon, on the way to Hillcrest, that street's in bad shape. Cleveland, up by Cleveland School's in bad shape. And maybe those will end up within the Millan Overlay group, but I don't see them anywhere in what's been presented. And so if there was a way to say this is coming, that would be helpful.
I will. I can tell you that right now as I snapped my book back, man. Do you still have? No, you don't still have. So as an example, well, at the end of your document that you have online in your inboxes is the capital improvement plan, and I did tweak a couple things there as well. Of course, the things we talked about in the capital project fund. Streets, a couple years out here, we put in some placeholders, and then like the parking lots you talk about are in there. Downtown lots, we actually have them listed for 2023, so one year out, looking at those north lots behind Victor Lundin's. So a good example that you bring up, it is in here. Looking at that then...
Oh, no, I was just going to...
And then let me just chime in. So like when you say about the 10% versus the 20%, Tax Levy Committee was looking at that of, okay, let's do 10, but then we want to come back to you with the franchise fees that will get us a lot more than 20%. So, and that's, I mean, I'd even like to still come back in December if possible. Maybe it'll have to be January, but us as staff have to talk a little bit about that just with Ottertail Power and looking at the Phase 3 plans, and some of that's maybe got to move kind of quickly, too. But that's the hope behind the franchise fees, which several cities are doing. Then it's a dedicated source for streets. You're not going to siphon it off or anything else. It is four streets, and it would be a lot, probably a lot more than 20% then.
A lot more. And that's exactly what the Tax Levy Committee, and of course, it comes back, the franchise fees would come back to the council, determine the percent, the amount, all that. But it would be a dedicated source for streets so that we're not continuously fighting that battle of increased taxes and how much we spend on services.
Other than the franchise fees, they're still a form of taxation.
Absolutely, but it's also spread, so currently those that aren't paying taxes, like nonprofits, and it's also a user base, so a lot of the heavy users of energy, it's spread out a little differently than on the, and then it also takes care of the assessments is, would be the plan.
Correct.
So instead of paying assessments when they come to your streets, you're paying a little bit every, every month. So I think we can obviously have that discussion, but it is, if we want to spend more on streets, you know, that Tax Levy Committee thought that that's what we want to bring back to the council. I think the council had indicated they want to have that conversation as well, so. And I completely agree, we need to spend more on streets and...
And maybe even at the next committee of the whole, we could delve into a little bit more of this discussion on franchise fees. Like I say, I know Ottertail is looking, you know how things go. If you're planning a project next summer, you got to be thinking about it now and so.
Any other, there's any other questions?
I think I would just echo Scott's comment that I'd like to see us even now spend more money on streets, you know, street repair. I mean, it's still the biggest item that, you know, general public complains about is, you know, the lack of, the lack of kind of quality of roads.
So Bill, the, are we still on, and again, the Tax Levy Committee thought, you know, discussed this quite a bit, are we still on track for funding in 20, I mean, Mark, you were talking about second quarter of 2022 potentially, are we still?
To implement a franchise fees? We, I mean, we could, because it's just implemented with an ordinance process, so, and then you have to give the companies, what's it, 60 or 90-day notice?
60 days for Ottertail and Great Plains to PUC.
Right. So I think what I'm hearing, we should come back yet in December and discuss franchise fees. And I know Ottertail would like us to get that settled with you, too.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, well, I'll make a suggestion. Because I agree, we need to spend more on streets, and we originally had planned to have this discussion on franchise fees at the same time as the budget, so we could see that, that's not ready. If we could bring this back in two weeks to show exactly what the impacts that would be, and if the council still wishes to increase the tax or increase the spending within the budget and not go with franchise fees, then the council can decide that at that time.
Except we can't increase the levy.
No, but you could adjust the budget just to increase this. We could come up with a contingent plan of where that money would be coming.
You rob Peter to pay Paul. You rob Peter to pay Paul, where are you going to take it from?
Right.
I mean, yeah. No, no, I think, I mean, I think we're all in the same, I think most of us are in the same presence of increasing to the budget with knowing that franchise fee is coming. I'm comfortable moving forward with the proposed budget, knowing that with anticipation in 2022, we'd have that franchise fee set up and start using that allocated source of funding for streets going forward. We've talked about it for two years, and I think it's on the docket. So I don't know that we need to delay this because that's still, I mean, I don't think we're going to vote franchise fees down. So I think I'm comfortable moving forward as presented with an expectation that soon and later we can get franchise fees set up. Okay, that's my opinion.
Okay, so there's a resolution on the floor adopting the 2022 levy. Any further questions?
Need second.
No, we have a, it was Krista's second. Roll call, please.
Bobby.
Yes.
I'm first.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks.
No.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinker.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. And then secondly, we would need a resolution adopting the 2022 what?
I'll make that one, too, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Caroline. Roll call, please.
Bobby.
Yes.
Rupert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Jessison.
Yes.
Hicks.
No.
Fish.
Yes.
Pinker.
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Can we set a, not to put staff under the needle, but can we set a deadline on when we could come back with franchise fees, just so we have, I think it's something we need to do.
I think we need to talk about it at the next committee of the whole, and maybe even action at the second meeting in December.
It's a good call. We're waiting on numbers from one of the energy companies, utility companies, and it's, I'm not going to throw anybody under the bus, it's the smaller of the three, but we can't give you good, good numbers until we have the data. That's been the holdup. We had a very productive conversation in last week, and we anticipate those shortly. So I think that's a great goal, but we are kind of at the mercy of an outside agency right now to be able to give you that.
Well, that'd be, that'd be great. I just think to Mr. Hicks's points and Mr. Kwame's, we all hear, we all do in the city about the roads. So I think it's a great point to be had, and we could just push the envelope to try and get something in place for 2022 that'd be in everybody's best interest, so.
And I think that I would just say, even if we don't have exactly the numbers, I think giving the council the information that was presented at the tax level will give people an idea of the kind of...
The principle of how this...
The opportunity to have to make significant investments in our streets. I think that then it's just up to the council of how you want to tweak that, what caps you want to flood, how exactly that was distributed. But there's good options there, and there's opportunity to spend a lot more on our streets.
And then with, go ahead first.